For the next item, staff and I are so pleased to bring forward our 2023-2024 back-to-school update. We have a number of staff who will come forward to present that item, which I will be kicking And this will represent our back-to-school efforts across the school system and a number of departments who've worked collaboratively to make sure we are ready and excited to welcome our students back to school and welcome for the first time many brand-new students who will be joining us in Henrico County Public Schools. So, as you well know, we use the Henrico County Public Schools Strategic Plan Destination 2025 to guide our work in one of Virginia's most diverse districts. Our nearly 50,000 students represent 124 countries, speaking 139 languages. We serve these students, each with unique skills and abilities and passions. But our mission for all learners is very clear: We strive to ensure diverse and rigorous educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens. As we embark upon a new academic year, it's important to recognize the dedication and commitment of our principals and central office staff. They have worked tirelessly to ensure that our students have a safe, nurturing, and productive learning environment for this upcoming school year. So, as you know, staffing our schools is a shared priority. So first and foremost, I want to let you know that every classroom across the district will be covered beginning on the first day of school. We recently welcomed 500 teachers to our new Teacher Academy, and this cohort includes teachers who are new to the profession as well as veteran educators who are new to Henrico County Public Schools. The division is 97% staff for instructional staff, which includes teachers, librarians, and school counselors with 122 openings division-wide. This takes into account qualified board substitutes that we do have in place to fill a teacher's role for the year, the utilization of our prep employees, a partnership with Proximity Learning, and that provides virtual instruction at the secondary level for select courses and creative classroom scheduling strategies. As in years past, a teacher may be covering an extra class period in their building until a permanent teacher is hired, and in those instances, teachers receive a stipend if they've covered during their planning period. Although all classes are covered on day one, we continue to recruit teachers and staff through avenues such as our job fairs, college and university visits, and the support of career switchers and instructional aides who may be seeking a teaching license. The division also utilizes a plethora of recruitment strategies such as the Extended Employee Referral Program that you probably know about that offers bonuses to staff who help us recruit new team members to the Henrico County Schools team. And once again, our goal is to make sure students have access to their desired classes and core content areas as well. So while hiring teachers garners much attention during the summer, there is work being done in every department and office for a successful school year. Now, Dr. Stacy Austin will continue our back-to-school update with details regarding other summer activities as we prepare for the new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Stacy Austin. Providing opportunities for students and staff to learn and grow during the summer is an important component of back-to-school readiness. This summer, the division has had four areas of focus: Summer Engagement with Families, Promoting the Health and Wellness of Students, Rigorous System Programs, and Robust Professional Learning for Teachers and Lives that Follow. We'll provide more detailed information for each one of those summer focus areas. Student HCPS began its sixth year's targeted summer engagement initiative out of Henrico. Aim is strengthening the HCPS student-family school connection, identifying potential barriers to school attendance, engagement, and overall success.
And linking families with resources and supports, thank you, to address identified needs. As part of this initiative, daily, we're going to be good there, okay? Daily community outreach and home visits by trained summer engagement staff resulted in 2,059 personal connections with HCPS families across all five magisterial districts. Additionally, HCPS Family Engagement Team facilitated rolling Resource Center appearances throughout the summer, engaging at 16 apartment communities and three areas of hotels throughout the summer. It resulted in over 750 successful connections and providing the opportunity to link HCPS families and communities to basic need resources, STEAM activities, school readiness kits, and literacy materials in preparation for the new school year. Finally, McKinnon Vento staff hosted three family cookout events at area hotels, and 21 vendors participated, providing connections and resources for our students and their families. In total, the events resulted in 150 student contacts. Eighty-three students were identified as eligible under McKinnon Vento and are thereby day-one-ready. Additionally, 33 students were connected to the Richmond City Schools McKinnon Vento team for their continued enrollment. As you know, HCPS continues to prioritize the health and wellness of each of our nearly 48,000 students and 7,000 employees. This summer, to support HCPS families with meeting vaccination requirements prior to the start of the school year, School Health Services partnered with the Virginia Department of Health, Richmond, and Henrico Health Districts to hold four free walk-in vaccination clinics for all middle and high school students. These clinics, coupled with our end-of-the-year efforts last spring, resulted in over 900 of our rising 7th and 12th grade students having received their required vaccines through an HCPS event. Additional community vaccination clinics and resources are available to families with children who need routine vaccines, and a list of requirements can be found on the HCPS and the VDH websites. Additionally, School Health Services has ensured that all HCPS school buildings and auxiliary locations are equipped with automated external defibrillators, also known as AED units. At this time, all elementary schools are equipped with at least one AED unit, with many having two. Furthermore, all middle schools are equipped with at least two AED units, and all high schools are equipped with at least five. School Health Services will lead all efforts regarding the continued placement, care, and use of the AED units moving forward.
Thank you.
Summer Academy for Summer 2023 offered valuable opportunities for elementary-level students to enhance their reading and mathematics skills through whole-group and small-group instruction. Families had the flexibility to choose between a four-week and a two-week session to best fit their schedules. 2,646 students attended. Additionally, at the secondary level, a diverse range of courses were provided, including remediation, credit recovery, enrichment, and acceleration workshops catering to students' individual needs and interests. A total of 4,227 students participated in secondary programs, including almost 600 students who participated in the CTE Summer Building Trades and Summer Polytech programs. The Summer Academy proved to be a comprehensive and beneficial program, fostering academic growth and preparing students for future success. Over a four-week period, approximately 700 students attended our summer extended school year for our Exceptional Education Services. ESY is considered for all special education students, but students must qualify to receive these services as part of a free and appropriate public education. Students qualified for services to support a variety of IEP goals, including literacy, math, social skills and behavior, and post-secondary workplace transition. The English as a Second Language Enrichment Academy took place over a five-week period to support Level 1 newly-arrived ESL students that use language-rich resources and materials, integrating academic vocabulary and level literacy through all of the content areas using enrichment activities. The program benefited and provided students with language-building, literacy skills, academic language, and the opportunity to engage in language-rich, hands-on learning activities. By providing this head start, students' needs were met in all areas through social and emotional learning, problem-solving, and we wanted to ensure a smooth transition into Henrico County Public Schools. Summer 2023 proved to be brief in length but robust in learning opportunities for teachers and for leaders. Collaborative efforts across the division resulted in a comprehensive array of learning experiences, thoughtfully curated based on staff feedback, all of them rooted in the HCPS instructional model and aligned to Destination 2025 with a division focused on hope, belonging, and learning. Administrators were invited to participate in CHAMP's training, which is a positive behavior support approach to student engagement and classroom management. School leadership teams embarked on a conference-style professional learning week, offering over 90 topics for leaders to choose from based on their supervisory responsibilities and on personal areas of interest and growth. In addition to the variety of PD for teachers over the summer, one exciting highlight of the summer was the launch of the first-ever Novice Teacher Week by Exceptional Education Team, designed specifically for special education teachers holding provisional licenses with zero or one years of experience. Overall, Summer 23 served as a valuable learning platform for teachers and for our leaders. And at this time, Jim Ellis and Susan Moore will provide the section on operational updates.
This year, transportation will roll out a bus referral app to be used by drivers and schools to assist with bus-related behavioral referrals. We have had positive results and feedback from the spring pilots and believe this will help improve communication between drivers, zone offices, and schools. Transportation team members continue to ensure the safety of all bus riders, and this year it has been added to the code of conduct that all elementary students are required to wear a seatbelt if the bus have them in place. Within the past year, we have received 80 new buses, making the number 223 buses that we have purchased since 2019 that are equipped with climate control and seatbelts. We have already placed an order for 30 new buses to arrive between January and March of 2024. The transportation team continues its yearly process of reviewing ridership data to evaluate close to 1,700 bus routes and optimize them for efficiency. In doing so, we have reduced the number of drivers needed from 65 to 130. This helps reduce the number of buses scheduled to arrive after the first bell rings as we work to eliminate late buses completely. We will continue to schedule early pickups for early pickup times for Tier 1 elementary schools. Students who arrive early will have an opportunity to get their breakfast immediately upon arrival. The team continues to recruit new drivers and provides both CDL and annual training to new and returning drivers. Ms. Susan Moore will now provide a building and facilities and school nutrition service
Our central facilities tradesmen and school-based custodial and maintenance teams have been hard at work this summer preparing all of our buildings. Staff completed projects in all of our buildings, including HVAC, flooring, parking lot paving, routine maintenance needs, and deep cleaning of classrooms and common spaces. The grad center will be moved from its previous location on Williamsburg Road to a portion of the Adult Ed Learning Center in Highland Springs. The facilities team is finishing up the work to transform this to a new learning space for the grad students. Additional safety layers continue to be added to our buildings. Renovations continue to school entry vestibules for safety. We continue to work on blue-ribbon panel recommendations. To date, we are distributing additional walkie-talkies to our schools. We're installing uniform room numbering in various schools. We are installing solar film, which allows for one-way viewing at windows and doorlights on specific doors and windows as recommended. We're installing shades in the areas that the film cannot be installed. We're replacing deteriorated blinds, and we're installing additional card readers as well. Our weapons scanners and handheld scanners were delivered to HCPS, and Facilities is in the process of delivering these items to the high schools. Administrators at all levels have received training with these new scanners. High school students will begin using the scanners the first week of school, and the scanners will be introduced and phased in at middle and elementary schools as the equipment is received from the manufacturer. Our school nutrition services is happy to announce that once again, HCPS will not raise student meal prices for the upcoming school year. Meal service will resemble pre-pandemic service models to offer students the greatest variety, food quality, and service. While meal applications are once again required to qualify for free and reduced-price meals, many HCPS students will not be required to complete applications due to direct certification and the Community Eligibility Provision, CEP. School Nutrition Services continues to expand its participation in the CEP program, with 43 schools currently offering free meals to all students. Carver Elementary, Greenwood Elementary, and Tucker High School are being added to that group. The full list of current CEP schools can be found on our website. I'll now turn over the presentation to Mike DeSault, Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning and Innovation.
As we approach a new school year, Henrico continues to be guided by Destination 2025, our strategic plan to attain academic excellence and equity for all students. We remain strongly focused on providing instructional and student supports, promoting family engagement, and ensuring all schools are ready to welcome our students and teachers. Shown on this slide is Henrico's teaching and learning framework, which is comprised of three distinct components: The aligned curriculum, which anchors instruction to state standards and outcomes for students; the instructional model, which represents components that drive teaching and learning in Henrico. Teachers consider how best to design, deliver, and assess in a learner-centered community. Ongoing reflection and adapting their response to student needs creates an instructional environment that supports all learners. Ongoing professional learning takes place throughout the division and in schools that allow for job-embedded application of our content-specific resources. Throughout the summer, our teachers and administrators were offered multiple professional learning opportunities in HCPSU, which is anchored directly to the best practices within the HCPS instructional model. Teachers and administrators focus much of their learning on establishing a strong, learner-centered community by showcasing the importance of a plan to ensure that all students feel a sense of hope and belonging throughout the first few months of the school year. Throughout the year, the division will continue to develop and reinforce practices within the instructional model that help teachers generate more learner-centered pathways and experiences for our students. The team is confident that the hard work, resilience, and shared commitment to creating a learner-centered experience for all students will shine through all of Henrico County Public Schools this year. In addition to the rigorous academic content HCPS is known for, we continue to foster community building in all classrooms and schools while creating that sense of safety and security through the re-establishment of routines, procedures, and behavioral expectations. Pre-K through 12 community-building activities are embedded throughout the day and directly contribute to the creation of a learner-centered environment. These may include brief discussions and activities to provide students and faculty with the opportunity to share, think, and collaborate. Other joint problem-solving opportunities get to know one each other, explore commonalities and differences, but all will ultimately build and strengthen relationships. Additionally, all students have access to a comprehensive school counseling program that addresses their social, emotional, and mental health and wellness. All pre-K through 12 students will be provided with weekly, research-based lessons and activities delivered by the classroom teacher aimed at fostering learner agency while strengthening school connectedness and building classroom communities where all students are included, respected, and valued. Next, we will hear from three of our school leaders about how all this comes together in our schools. Today, we have with us James Gordon, Principal of Glenly Elementary, Robert Stevens of Quayacus and Middle School, and Dr. John Marshall of Freeman High School. These principals have been collaborating with their colleagues and will share information and activities that are happening across the division in different ways.
Greetings, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. I am excited to share how elementary teams in the district are building on the county-level theme of hope, belonging, and learning as we plan back-to-school activities with students, families, and staff and community partners. Many of my colleagues and I are having a variety of fun-filled opportunities for stakeholders to connect and create a sense of belonging before the school year begins. We are hosting events to give our newest scholars and kindergarteners a chance to visit their schools and meet their teachers through kindergarten camps, kindergarten playdays, and Sneaker Peek before the open house. In addition to back-to-school nights, some of the out-of-the-box engagement activities this summer include popsicles on the playground for new families to have an opportunity to meet and greet the principal, pizza parties, food vendors, and ice cream trucks for families to come together to develop a sense of community and belonging. At Glenly, we are excited about going to the next level this school year as the marathon continues with our scholars' progress. This summer, we were strategically visible and active in our school community. On June 27, our Glenly attendance team participated in the Feed More Food distribution at St. Luke's Apartments. Additionally, our Glenly faculty and staff partnered with St. Luke's for their National Night Out activities for August 1. We have been sending bi-weekly communication to our families in July regarding upcoming events so that our community is well-informed about what is happening at Glenly. My principal partners on the elementary level are keeping their families well-informed as well. Now, Robert Stevens and John Marshall will share their upcoming events at the secondary
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Stevens, Principal of Quayacus and Middle School.
I'm John, John Marshall, proud principal of Freeman High School.
We're excited to share information about back-to-school events, activities, and preparations at the secondary level. At middle and high school, we represent the final years on a student's journey towards graduation. So it's vital we are concentrating on building life-ready learners. To do that, we seek to engage all students and families in completing that journey. On August 17, we will host two events: Q Camp for our rising 6th graders and Open House for our 7th and 8th grade students. These events will give students and families the opportunity to meet their teachers toward this building, ease some of the apprehension about returning to school. This back-to-school excitement is punctuated by the return of extracurricular activities. At QMS, we are starting a new esports team that increases belonging and increases students who, or includes students who do not want to participate or play traditional sports.
At Freeman High School, we welcomed the class of 2027 this morning at Mav Camp, our freshman orientation. It was a great day at Freeman High School. And the entire Freeman family is invited to tour our school, meet staff, walk their schedules at our Freeman family open house coming up on August 16. New this year, based on feedback from our International Families Advisory Council, will host an open house for our international families, many of which are multilingual learners, for the Freeman feeder pattern and the surrounding schools. For many of our students at the secondary level, 2324 has already begun, with our campuses coming alive once again with extracurricular activities at the high school level, back on school grounds. Practices for our fall sports, our band and chorus are already underway.
Belonging is essential to our entire school community. Throughout the year, we promote events that welcome families into our schools, and we encourage continued back-and-forth communication. To meet the needs of our ESL students and newcomer families, we send out information in multiple languages, and we have translators available. Over the summer, we had the opportunity to connect with our families by conducting home visits and meeting students who attended Summer Academy. We joined the Family and Community Engagement Department at community events and met families at several neighborhoods hosting National Night Out events. During the first marking period, we will host Back-to-School Night, of course, an annual community tailgate, and the Food and Football Event that invites families to come out and watch students compete in soccer while enjoying foods from local food truck vendors.
As Mr. Stevens mentioned, building a culture of belonging is essential, both in and out of our classrooms. Our teachers will embed community-building moments into daily instruction to connect with students and build a classroom culture of belonging, because we know and research shows that students learn best when they know they belong. At DSF, the Freeman family is for everyone, and students will learn that from every teacher on their first day of school. The culture of belonging and trust in our classrooms from students of all backgrounds allows us to engage in deeper learning and bring student voice into instruction. At DSF, Project Maverick puts students' voice at the forefront, where every senior engages with public policy officials to use the skills they've learned throughout their K-12 journey to impact their community. Another example, Culture Day is a chance for students from all over the world to showcase their lived experiences. The groundwork for Culture Day, for Project Maverick, and other examples of life-ready learning starts this month and will continue all the way to graduation. Events like these are happening across each and every school in Henrico County, tailored to the needs and interests of each individual community. Now, Mike DeSault, Elementary Director for Teaching and Learning, will come back to the presentation to share a little more about engaging our families.
So as you've heard throughout this presentation, family and community engagement has been intentionally woven throughout our back-to-school efforts. The team is extremely proud of how our various teams and departments have prioritized connection, communication, and collaboration with our families. In addition to these efforts, FACE continued to stay active with the community this summer. While working with a division-wide summer engagement team or hosting events at The Oak to raise awareness of services and offerings, we've had the pleasure to proactively engage with numerous community members. To build on that momentum, the Family and Community Engagement Team is planning a series of workshops and events as part of the Bridge Builders Academy. Watch for a complete schedule of events on the HCPS website in the coming days. We will also include a calendar in future editions of the family newsletter, The Binder. HCPS's Bridge Builders Academy features virtual gatherings and discussions with experts on a host of topics, designed to connect with our families with timely and relevant information. These sections are categorized into four learning strands: Beyond the Classroom, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion; Exceptional Education; Information Access and Opportunities. And last, but not least, we are preparing to greet hundreds of students and families this weekend as we prepare to bounce back to school. Kicking off tomorrow, August 11, and continuing through August 12, we are excited to continue our annual back-to-school event. Not only will the event offer resources, supplies, and the opportunity to connect with school leadership and personnel, our students will have experienced the importance of teamwork and collaboration during the three-on-three Hoop It Up Basketball Tournament. We hope to see each of you there. This concludes our back-to-school presentation, and at this time, we'd be happy to entertain any comments or questions from the board.
Mr. DeSault, thank you so much.
Mr. DeSault, thank you so much and team for the presentation. It was definitely insightful and inspiring. Colleagues, we'll move forward with the discussion, starting with Reverend Cooper. Do you have any thoughts you'd like to share?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So first, before I get to my questions, I just want to say thank you. Well done to Dr. Cashwell, our HR department, DLT, every single department, all of our administrators from central office to each of our 74 schools and centers. The hard work, preparation, and planning that goes into ensuring that our students and staff are ready from day one is challenging and taxing. Yet, time and time again, you all arrived to the occasion and delivered. So I say thank you. Slide two, Mr. Salt, put that on the screen if you could. Slide two puts into perspective just how immense and diverse our school system is. Missing from that data is the number of staff members we employ. But looking at these numbers, it just shows how much planning, forecasting, and executing have to take place. So again, I say thank you. With that being said, 97% staffed for teachers by day one is to be commended. I have seen aggressive recruitment efforts for our teachers, bus drivers, security staff, and all positions. And I can say you all have been everywhere at every event, heavily recruiting. Now to my questions. I know this is a moving target, but of the 122 unfilled teacher openings, are these openings scattered throughout the county or are there concentrations in certain areas of schools?
I think I will bring up someone who has a much deeper expertise than I.
Good afternoon, Board members and Reverend Cooper, Dr. Cashwell. There are vacancies across the division, but as always, we do have some areas of concentrated vacancies.
Okay, thank you. Because last year, in my district, it just so happens that I didn't know he was going to be here. Mr. Gordon, my man, good to see you. Glen Lee had the highest number of unfilled full-time teacher openings at the start of the school year. And so our Title I schools require different staffing ratios and as a result, require additional support, but sometimes have difficulty recruiting and retaining fully licensed instructional personnel. As a result, we've designed and designated those nine schools as Opportunity Schools. And Virginia Randolph Glen Lee, Laburnum, and Fairfield are the Opportunity Schools in the Fairfield District. Of these schools, could you speak to how the Opportunity School designation with the incentives has helped with recruiting efforts for this upcoming year?
Yes, and I might invite Dr. Grant to assist me as well. But from my standpoint in HR, we've been very pleased with the efforts of both the HR staff, I have to give them kudos, and the principals in securing employees to fill their vacancies, whether those are full-time teachers, board subs, or prep employees. They've worked very hard to cover those vacancies.
Well, thank you for that update. Do we have a breakdown of the number of qualified board substitutes versus fully licensed teachers at those schools?
Yes, sir, we do, and I can share that information with the full board.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Boom, appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Next, Health and Wellness, whoever did that one. All right.
Sir, we all fight to come up.
Good evening, I think Dr. Hughes. So for our students who have not received or will not have the required vaccines on day one, could you tell us how these students would be handled and if there are any options available for our parents or guardians in the upcoming days?
Sure, and I was looking back to Liz because I knew she just met with the Health Department right before this meeting as well. So we have been meeting throughout the summer with our school nurses, obviously, and with Henrico Mental Health as well. I'm looking back at you because I know she just had a meeting like two seconds ago. What we really want to do is continue to partner with Henrico Mental Health. And Liz is trying to work with the nurses to see how many more clinics we can actually get in the school. If you remember in the spring, instead of having our students go out to different locations because we knew there were some barriers with transportation, we actually had the students have received the immunizations in the schools. And that's what we're striving for. Again, we have an ongoing list. We know right now which students don't have their immunizations. We know which students will qualify for some waivers. So we do have some opportunities for students to come to school if they have an appointment card, and we know which immunizations those are. But our goal is to actually have students be able to come to their schools either in concentrated areas where we have the most students or, if possible, in as many schools as we can so that the students can come right to their home school and receive that immunization.
Yeah, I can just add a bit more. We did just get off the phone with Virginia Department of Health. And we are really working hard tomorrow and for next week to make contact and connect with as many families as possible to share their outstanding requirements as well as direct them to existing opportunities that are really spread throughout Henrico County and Richmond City. For families, there are a lot of spaces open and available and left for families to go in, get physicals, as well as updated immunizations. And then we are also working to plan in some targeted schools and areas, some onsite vaccination clinics, hopefully, starting that first week of school and carrying on at least the first and second week of school onsite just to help continue supporting families and students and getting the vaccinations that they need.
Now, that is awesome. I know last year I had a few constituents reach out because their children weren't vaccinated, and they were having a hard time getting appointments at their pediatrician.
Yes.
So this is phenomenal news, and I'm hoping that more families will take advantage of it. So hopefully, by the first day of school, our students will be vaccinated. Thank you for that.
Yes, absolutely. And so for any families whose students do not currently have their updated vaccinations, please, 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 do try to go ahead and make an appointment, contact your pediatrician, and do try to get in there for your immunizations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next question is for Mr. Ellis with Transportation. Quick question. So the Enhancement Student Code of Conduct around rider expectations, just to clarify, will all families who will be utilizing bus transportation be required to acknowledge that they have received and reviewed the updated student code of conduct?
We didn't plan to have it where they were aware of it. I'm not sure. Well, I know that when they do, when they look over their code of conduct, that something is signed for that.
All parents sign the form in ride course, so every parent will be expected to sign the form.
That's important. Thank you so much. Ms. Ellis, okay?
And we will be sending out additional information here in this next week for all those students. Those that are, we're trying to separate those that do ride a bus that has, that will have seat belts, that those parents are aware that those students will be required to wear seat belts.
No, thank you. Another question, is there an update on the staffing of our bus drivers for this year? How many bus driver positions need to be filled?
It's under 30. So we've worked to condense a lot of the routes based on our student rider information. So we are very tight, so there's little room for error, but we've got that number to 130.
Are you driving again?
I am. Still with it, still on my bus.
But thank you for that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, that's it for transportation. Yep, almost done. I know you all did not miss me. Susan, can you come back? So staffing of the scanners and SSOs, I know there are a number of SSO positions that still need to be filled. How will this impact our ability to efficiently manage the process at each of our schools? And are we planning on using volunteers in any capacity?
So Mr. Pritchard is working very closely with all the administrators in the school to identify the personnel that will be doing staffing for the metal detection at the entry, the student arrivals of the school systems. At this point, I'm not aware that we are looking at volunteers for part of this process. It would be school staff, the SSOs, and various school staff that are willing to participate. As a matter of fact, we just met one of the Highland Springs staff members that has already volunteered to be part of that process.
Susan's spot on, filling in for the security team today. And yes, so we want to make sure that individuals who are participating, our staff, and that they have the training needed rather than volunteers. And we do have a training plan in place. A number of staff have already been trained as we're working towards getting to implementation.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Susan, quick question. So kind of clarity on a question regarding the purchase of school meals. If a student purchases a meal but is still hungry, is that student allowed to purchase another full meal or are they only allowed to purchase à la carte items?
I am going to ask Mr. Whack to come up and answer this question, please.
And we can certainly provide an update outside of this meeting. How about we do that so we make sure we get that? We have a number of folks who represent the various areas who aren't here today, and their colleagues stepped right up. But we'll get you an answer to the school nutrition question.
All right, so I don't know if this can be answered, but out of the 43 CEP schools, they do not have to fill out any forms, right?
That's correct. That's a school-wide program. That one we can answer right there for you, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done. Technology, somebody for technology, was that you two?
That's right.
I'll do my best.
All right, so for our tech-savvy families or even our families who are learning, we have a number of apps, platforms, and online tools for our parents and guardians to gain access to resources, their student information, transportation information, et cetera, Power School, School Logi securely on the HCPS website. My question is, do we have, or could I put in a request to receive an easy-to-read one-page document that lists all the updated parental portals, online services, resources for our families' connections? Is that possible?
Yes, and I see Mrs. Cox nodding her head. And while she's coming for it, I'll just note that, you know, this is an excellent question, and I know we've gotten feedback from every board member, lots of our community. We want to make sure that we're making things as easy as possible for our families and caretakers to get access to information. We especially hear this when they have students with, in multiple schools, at multiple levels, and everything we can do to streamline that. We've done quite a bit of work on that over the past years.
And you ask and you will receive it tomorrow in The Binder. There is a list that has all of our current apps and what you use them for. If you're looking for a particular functionality, which app should you go to and how do you access it? Also, on our enhanced website, in the Online Resources section, there are how-to tutorials for accessing School Logi, Power School, and other online apps so that you know not only how and what they're for, but the assistance to make sure that you're able to log into your account before the first day of school.
I appreciate it because as we're sitting here, I had got an update that says bus is arriving. Bus 23227 is within .5 miles of drop-off for my kid. I mean, it's just amazing how technology has helped us to more efficiently manage and also assist us in teaching. So thank you for that.
And we're also looking at all of the functionality of our different apps to see if there's a way for us to streamline access to those. But that's a little bit longer-term plan than right now. We want parents to be aware of what each does individually.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. We are going to skip ahead to item 11.01, our public hearing, which is the next agenda item that we're going to move to.
If our presenters would just hold tight. We're skipping to a 4 o'clock. We have the agenda, and then we will resume. So I'll let you go ahead.
So sit tight one moment. The next item, which is the 4 o'clock because we're here, is the public hearing to solicit input related to a resolution for the convenience of surplus property, 4.78-plus acres at Mount Vernon Adult Education Center located at 7850 Carousel Lane. Today's public hearing is for the sole purpose of soliciting the public's input related to this resolution, and the board will be voting on the resolution at today's meeting. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first and then allow anyone else who wishes to speak to do so after we have completed the list. We have asked that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation, if applicable. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, not the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to the school board clerk. Once you have finished speaking, if you did not sign up in advance, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form located on the table in the back of the auditorium. Any use of profanity or inappropriate language will be ruled out of order. Speakers are allotted three minutes to address the school board. To assist you in tracking your time to address the school board, there is a timekeeping system displayed that displays the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from the chair when the time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers, but we will carefully consider your comments. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and for your input. Do we have any speakers? No speakers at this time. All right, again, I confirm we have no speakers signed up at this time that are present. Therefore, we will resume our discussion. Mrs. Shea.
Well, I don't know that there's any comments left after Reverend Cooper just ticked down that list. Well, you certainly brought the A-team today to present to us, so I appreciate that. Just a couple of thoughts and one or two questions. Mr. DeSault, I really appreciated how you shared about the conference-style professional development. We know just that our students aren't one-size-fit-all. The needs of our teachers and our staff aren't one-size-fits-all. And so as we really work to make the most of our teachers' time and their development, giving them some voice and some choice as to what they need is really important. So I appreciate our PD's team to really kind of revamp how we do professional learning to be best beneficial to our teachers. And I know that also trickles down to the school level as our principals are designing professional learning for our teachers too, and that really makes a difference. It really sets a tone for our staff that we hear them and we see them as people, as individuals, and we value them. So thank you for that. And as well as your tireless work on the aligned curriculum. It really is extraordinary. I know last September, I was extra set of hands in kindergarten classrooms trying to get everybody, you know, in the pace of the school year and going from school to school and classroom to classroom. Like, I knew it was M-week and B-week and, you know, whatever else in the kindergarten classroom because it was so well-aligned while still giving teachers autonomy on how to deliver it to the needs of our students. And I think that is so paramount as we look at how do we move together as, you know, 70-plus schools? How do we move together in the same direction and still meet the individual needs of our students? And I think that's it, an aligned curriculum with autonomy in our classrooms for our teachers to be able to do what they do best. So thank you for those updates. Mr. Ellis, I do have one question for you regarding the bus referral app. I know we were hoping to implement it last year, and I think maybe supply chain got in the way. What's the timeline look like for this year for implementation?
For the bus app?
Yes.
The bus parent?
Sorry.
The referral?
The referral, the on-bus technology.
Again, it's a slow process with the, like, the 80 buses that we have just received. They don't have all the communication things that are on them yet because we've got them, now we've got the buses, now they've got to install it. Yes, we're going to run the buses, but they're not going to have all the tablets and everything on them to start. But we're working to, if they don't have it on the buses, they still will be writing the students up and giving it to their zone offices. The zone offices will then in turn put it in the system, and it'll go forward from there.
And just for clarity for those in the public who might be listening, when we say we're adding this piece, it may not be operational. All other aspects of the bus would be, we're talking about the referral app, which eases communication between the driver and school administration should there be a breach of student code of conduct, discipline issue that need to be communicated. And if those tablets aren't in place for that seamless communication that we're looking forward to having on all our buses, the traditional method of communicating with the administrators would still be in place.
And what about the swipe on the, I don't have any of the correct terminology today, Mr. Ellis. I'm glad you drive a bus better than I speak. Where the students kind of swipe in and swipe out of the bus?
Right.
Right. And that's also a work in progress as well. We did, we're successful in doing a pilot with Ward Elementary. Everything, you know, it was, is a work in progress. We did accomplish what we wanted to do. And so we're going to start with the zones and by elementary schools slowly roll it out until everybody has it. Mainly, the biggest group that will have it this year will just be the elementary students. We are looking to put it on the bus with the students for the specialty groups that are in the ACE programs, where we know there are a lot of students that are being transferred back and forth, but we never have a really good number because a lot of people sign up, but not everybody rides a bus. And we try to be as efficient as possible with that. So those specialty centers, as well as ACE, they will be using them in the middle school and high school as well. But it'll be a slow rollout to get it accomplished because we want to make sure that the bus drivers are comfortable with the application as well as the tablet being on the bus before we just put it out there and then we have issues.
So looking again for that referral app to be a near term in all of our buses as we're getting those installed. And then for the ridership piece, that'll be a slower rollout. But really, again, looking to target our younger students in specialty centers as it's an effort to really get better ridership data on who's coming on and off our buses each day.
Correct.
Great, thank you so much. And then lastly, just thank you to our school-based, well, our whole division, but especially our school-based teams for your intentionality in student engagement, getting ready for back to school. You know, the days of Build It and They Will Come, we don't see that so much right now. And so really reaching out to our students and our families, making sure they're ready for the new year, that they know that the new year starts on August 21st and not in September. All of that is important as well as, Dr. Marshall, I always love your heart for our international learners and how you and your team are very intentional about making sure that they have a voice and seeking out what that community's needs are. They're an essential part of Freeman. And then also engaging the feeder pattern. And Mr. Stevens, sending all that information out to your community as well as we look to expand that footprint and expand who we're reaching there. It's just, it's so important. And then as Ms. Cox mentioned, we have a lot of apps as parents that we're going through. And so the new one being the Parent Square app. And so I didn't know if one of our principals or Ms. Cox wants to share why that app is important this year and how it might streamline things. Because I know there's quite a few parents who have not downloaded it and embraced it yet, so why is it important?
So the Parent Square app, who doesn't love a good app? We've decided to add yet another one. Parent Square is our new rapid notification system that moves beyond one-way communication of us sending messages to family and provides a two-way engagement opportunity. So when we are sending messages, we can also put them as posts that appear like a news feed on the app. And parents can engage through commenting, liking, asking questions. So that's at the division level. And then schools may use it the same way, and it drills all the way down to the classroom teacher. And a classroom teacher will have their class rostered for each of their periods or each of their class groups. And they can send messages directly to the families of those particular students. They can send photos. They can send individual messages. They can send a class message. And the information is shared without having to provide a teacher's private information. They can send it from their phone without having to disclose their private cellphone number. It is a better security measure in, when you think about staff and students and families interacting with one another. And the best part of it for me is that a teacher who speaks English can send a message in English, and the end user, who English may not be their native language, can select to receive the message in their home language. It automatically translates, and they'll receive it in their native language. They can respond in their native language, and it will translate back to the teacher's native language as well. So it not only provides emergency communication, but it really helps break down some of those barriers to day-to-day communication.
I see the principals behind you like nodding with like, yes, this is things we need. So this could replace something like Seesaw hypothetically.
Eventually. And so our goal right now, we understand that there are many teachers that are already using different programs and platforms. We want them to have time to familiarize themselves with Parent Square as we get back. We don't want this to feel like it's being pushed at them, but is a resource for them. And so we're hopeful that as they continue to use Parent Square, they'll find that they're able to consolidate and maybe not need all of these other platforms, which then makes it easier for parents to get their information in one place.
Great, thank you so much. And for our staff who are also parents, I love that it has everything in the same place. So I get push notifications from the staff side and from the parent side. So really trying to streamline things. And then just to sum up, the conversation about a culture of belonging just so resonates. You know, it's my dream for every student into Henrico to feel like an essential part of their school community. We know that's a game changer in engagement with positive impacts on academics and behavior and a whole list of things. So thank you for y'all's tireless work. Please, as a board, let us know how we can support that work and how we can support you all back to school.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Ogden?
Sure, thank you. I echo what Mrs. Shea was saying about the culture of belonging. I was taking copious notes as y'all were saying. I mean, that to me is just awesome because that's really what we're all about. My main comments were going to be about the summer engagement. So Dr. Austin, I think you've said this part. It seems like it's a long time ago. But we, just more information on the home visits and the team that was, I'm sorry, you're coming all the way from the back. The team that was charged with doing this because I think this is an essential part of what we're doing. Because I know absenteeism is such a big problem that we're trying to tackle. And going directly to these families and explaining to them how important it is that they get their kids to school every day. What can we assist you with to make that happen? So if you can give me some more information about those teams, what they were doing, the message that they're taking, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So our summer engagement teams that had the opportunity to conduct home visits in multiple neighborhoods with multiple families this year are comprised, the majority of them are comprised of our school social workers, our school counselors, our school psychologists. And then we have a number or variety of other folks that come, employees from HCPS that come and join us. They all receive training so that they feel comfortable and confident as to what their role is and how they can best support families. They also get a packet of resources and information that they can share with families. And then they work hard to link families back to their school so that the schools can continue to follow up and provide support throughout the summer as well throughout the school year.
Right. Now, do they have to like make appointments or do they just show up? They just show up?
Correct. That's correct. We do notify families in advance that these teams will be coming. So if you see a whole lot of strangers in your neighborhood wearing these T-shirts.
That was what I was going to ask.
Yes. That is there. And then if we miss a family. Yeah. If we miss a family and they don't happen to be home, we actually have door hangers that we provide and leave on their door that has resources as well as the contact number that they can reach out to. And then we can go back or we can connect them over the phone with resources.
I personally think this is just awesome because, I mean, we really need those families to understand we want those kids in school. We need those kids in school. They need to be there. We want them there. And, I mean, you know, we always say we meet students where they are. And that's truly what these teams are doing. And they make that homeschool connection is so important. And going right to the, to families where they are, I think is just awesome.
Thank you.
If I could simply add on the operational, on the operational end, the extension of that activity through the summer, a lot of, well, all of our schools are doing a comprehensive needs assessment right now as they're getting ready for the school year. And almost all of them are talking about absenteeism and how it impacts. And we're talking about reducing barriers that might create a disconnect. We want to take those away to leave us with just that open arm, ready to come to the school and be a part of it. We want them connected. And, you know, we've got to remove as many barriers as we can.
Well, and in that vein, I like the fact that the app you, you know, can change, is user-friendly, or depending on those families to select the language of their choice, et cetera. Again, it's making, it's removing those barriers that might exist. And it helps the staff find out how can we best assist that family and get that child in school. So I think that's just amazing. And, you know, we always talk about how wonderfully diverse this county is. And now we're really embracing it and saying, okay, we're all one big Henrico family. Let's get the kids in school. So I absolutely applaud the effort to increase this effort that y'all are making. So that was all I had, but thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogden. Mrs. Cancela.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues for their level of detail as well as everyone that presented today and just all the hard work across the division that even though our schools, students haven't really been in building like they are throughout the year outside of summer programming, but that doesn't mean folks haven't been working really hard to address things this summer. I'm going to start with, let me see, the app and just how much I love Parent Square as a parent and as an employee. But definitely as a parent, and I don't know who might have the answer to this question, perhaps it's Dr. Cashwell today. Do we have a way to track our families? And how many have actually downloaded the app? Because this app, I think, is going to be transformational in how we communicate and reach our families and then how we streamline it or how we add things to this app. I love Parent Square. So do we have a, Ms. Cox, do we have a way to track? How many of our families are using it?
Yes, we have a real-time dashboard for the division administrators who are responsible for Parent Square. And then each school principal and administrator can look in and see specific to their school as well. So right now, everyone is signed up in Parent Square through Power School so that they can receive emergency notifications. So there is, if we need to send out an email, phone call, text message, similar to what we did in our previous system, everyone is already signed up for that. Then there's the opportunity for families to download the app and see that daily feed or receive a daily summary of notifications. And I believe the last time I checked, it was more than a third of our parents have already signed up for that and the same, about the same for our staff, a little bit more of our staff than our families, which is not uncommon in working with the Parent Square staff. You know, as you're leading into the start of the school year, we'll start to see that increase. And then once the school year begins and schools are using it more often, we'll see parents continue to sign up.
Okay. And we're just going to, we're going to continue. I have to shout out again the enhanced website. And that's ongoing work, so thank you for that. So we're going to continue communicating in all the other ways as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
In addition to the app. Just want to, just want to highlight that for folks that we're not doing, we're not switching just to the app yet. And thank you, thank you for your communications answers. I think that's all on this piece. I think, I haven't, I didn't hear an HVA update today. So would the activities going on for our K-12 Virtual Academy be similar to some of the work that we're seeing in our freestanding buildings?
That's right. The information shared by the administrators who were representing their colleagues, HVA is one of our schools. And so the examples given related to their efforts to tie into the themes of hope and belonging, the efforts to engage their families, the various back-to-school nights. Yes, all of that would apply. And of course, they would advertise their events just like each individual school would to their school community.
Great, thank you. Sometimes I receive questions, as the board member for that academy, why weren't they specifically mentioned? So in essence, they were, right?
Absolutely. It's a great question, especially with it being one of our newer programs. And so, you know, yes, this applies to all of our various schools, programs, and centers.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I believe it was Reverend Cooper who touched on vaccinations, immunizations. So the team said that we know who the families are, and we're contacting some of the families and providing opportunities for them. Will this, especially at this, at all levels, but how will this impact? For example, there are, there's an immunization for our juniors and our secondary. Will this impact instruction? For example, will they not be allowed at school?
Students who, students who don't have the required vaccinations are not able to attend school, which is why the team has gone to great lengths to do anything we can, including, you know, hosting those clinics, keeping things as close to the neighborhood school site as possible to make it easy for families, making connections. And so, you know, again, we recognize that students cannot be fully enrolled in school unless they meet those requirements set forth by the state.
And so we're also communicating that when we reach out to families, right? I mean, this is, this is detail, which is, I know today is very high-level, but just as a board member, we're letting families know this is going to impact your attendance at school on day one, no matter what level it is, K-12.
Yes, we, yes, we're communicating with families. And then the school nurses are also communicating, obviously, with the building principals. And what we're going to do this year as well is communicate with all of the classroom teachers that that child is assigned to so that not only the principals can help make contact, the school counselors can help make contact, and the teachers can help us as well. Because we, to your point, we need every student in the seat, ready to go. And part of that is that immunization process.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. My next question really centers around some summer programming. As a parent and as a board member, I couldn't be more proud of our summer programming, especially our Polytech programs and our summer building trade programs. Having two children that actually participated in summer building trades and just hearing from parents out in the community and how much they're appreciating the Polytech program. I know that the interest outweighs the seats, which is a good thing because there's a high level of interest. I just can't compliment the team enough. And then our funding for summer programming goes through summer 2024. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the additional summer program we added through the S.R. funding. So yes, at some point, yeah. So we've, you know, we expanded our summer academy efforts beyond what we've done in past years as we've leveraged that funding. But we still intend to carry on with summer activities. It may be more limited to those who require remediation and so on. But it's certainly the exploratory. I don't want people to think those are going away. Those programs existed before. But we've really been able to expand our efforts to target more students in summer academy through the use of our S.R. funds.
Yeah, the expansion of summer programming, really, I've heard such great things, so I just want to share that, that hopefully that will stay in our budget going forward. And we'll continue to expand it to meet the need that exists. And I just really want to compliment the team. The responsiveness to the relevance of professional learning. I've heard things this summer, just really, and in the past year, the efforts being made. I cannot thank the team enough. You know, to have professional, to have learning is one thing for our team members, but to have it be relevant, whether it's across the division or school-specific, just thank you so much for listening to our staff on that. That's what they've been asking for. And I just really thank you for providing it in response to the requests. Lastly, transportation. I am thrilled that we're reducing our vacancies in our drivers and we're finding efficiencies. Are we going to be able to eliminate our secondary late buses, our planned late buses this year? As that's the time where, you know, that's our advisory block? Is there a way to eliminate that, Mr. Ellis?
That is our goal. He's come to the podium now. Sorry, he wasn't there a second ago.
That is our goal. That, that is our goal, but of course, the biggest way to reduce that is to have drivers in seats, so.
And, and we're still firming up ridership. So I think, you know, as Mr. Ellis mentioned in his presentation, we've come a long way and, you know, having families let us know they're not riding the bus where we anticipated they might have been. And that allows us to then collapse some routes and do things to ensure more efficiency. But, you know, again, I'm going to use this opportunity, even though this isn't specific to your question, but just late buses, late arrivals in general, you know, those first weeks of school, even though your bus may be scheduled to arrive at a certain time, it may be a little early, it may be a little late, as we're fine-tuning those routes. And we're so grateful for the patience of our families as we get through those first weeks and really fine-tune ridership and routes.
Right. And also with, with our parent app that's on the buses, that they can determine where the bus is, with the tablets now being on the bus, the drivers, if they have to take another route on now, that, that information will show up on the, on their, on the parent app. And so there, that way they, they have more information right in their hand. And, and on that note as well, there's only, you know, there's over 40,000 students that are eligible to ride the school bus, but only about 12,000 actually use the parent app. So the more people they can get on that, the more information that you'll have in your hand that you won't have to call the schools or us to find out where your bus is. It'll be readily available in your, in your hands.
You should definitely get the app for that.
Correct.
On that, related to the app conversation we were having.
Yeah. Thank you so much. That's, that's all I have for transportation. And then I have two more questions. I believe it was Reverend Cooper who asked specifically about 122 vacancies left. I mean, that's extraordinary, given the vacancies that we had. If someone, perhaps you, Dr. Cashwell, could just speak to 122 vacancies and the fact, just highlighting again for anyone that will listen back to this meeting, that qualified board subs will be in those classrooms, right?
That's right. All of our classrooms are covered day one. Now, of course, where we're still showing a vacancy, it may be that an individual is coming in to serve as a long-term substitute, or we call them board sub. But to make it clear, we've, that person is obligated to being there for the length of time until such full-time staff member is hired. But as mentioned, between prep participants, and again, for those who wouldn't know what prep is, is there retirees who may be still licensed in the content area coming back to teach with us, board subs, again, long-term substitutes who are qualified in the area to teach. And so we are ensuring that our classrooms are covered day one, but still recruiting to get full-time staff into those vacancies. And in some cases, our board subs are working towards licensure and they may be well on the way. For example, they may be degreed in, they have a degree in chemistry, they have content knowledge and expertise in that, but they're working towards their licensure or something of that nature. So, yes.
I appreciate, I appreciate the clarity there that those aren't just daily substitutes. There are, that there are 122.
Correct. Yeah, they're, they're arranged for a long-term scenario, understanding the vacancy. Yes.
Fantastic. And then lastly, there was a brief spotlight on project graduation. And since we just celebrate our graduates on the 31st, I wanted to see if the, to request if the board could really receive a high-level summary of participation and the outcomes associated with this particular programming as we talk about graduation rates and which programs are successful for our students. I'm interested in receiving that data if it's not too, if it's not too much to, to share with the board.
We'll be happy to provide a summary of project graduation.
Thank you so much. That's all I have, Vice Chair, Atkins.
Thank you, Mrs. Kinsella. And I will sort of close our discussion just with a few remarks. And thinking about going back to school, the 2324 school year is a blank canvas waiting for unique strokes of brilliance. This presentation is a testimony of success of what we can do. 97% staff, intentional personal connections, all buildings equipped with AEDs, an enhanced student code of conduct around bus expectations. And all of the things we saw in this presentation solidify so many things. However, there is one that I will absolutely call out, and that's transforming part of the Adult Learning Center in Highland Springs to accommodate grad. And if anyone is familiar with where grad was located and where they will be, you will say amen. So I just wanted to name a few of the highlights from that presentation. The right to achieve, the support to succeed. So families, students, leadership team, staff, when we encounter obstacles, and we will, let's face them head-on and understand that the struggles that we are going through today will be our triumphs that we will share on tomorrow. And in this digital age where our information is right at our fingertips, remember the importance of balance and centering ourselves. It's very easy to get caught right back up into busy, busy, busy. But we had a crisis in a season where we had to pause. And I'm hopeful that we remember some of the lessons from that and to try and have balance and center ourselves. Remember to celebrate each other's successes, lend a helping hand when someone stumbles. These are the actions that foster hope, belonging, and learning. I want to close with saying that as we embrace challenges, that we remember to give each, give each other and ourselves grace, savor the victories, and let's make every moment of the 2324 school year count. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you again to all of you who presented, the amazing team. And we'll note again that our first day of school is August 21st. We welcome, look forward to welcoming everyone back.